Okay.
Organizational, organizational conversation about what, you know, where we want to cover when.
Sure.
Just to know from council whether you want to move forward with the education budget tonight, whether you want to move that to tomorrow night after we have an opportunity to talk to Kelly to address a couple of questions.
Yeah.
With that being said, we are in the last home run.
Yes.
We need to finish up on tomorrow night.
Right. And, and all due respect to staff, I, I think, I think it would really help if, if staff could talk to Kelly tomorrow, tell her some of the things that we've been discussing and have answers for us tomorrow night. Not, not, not necessarily you guys, but she needs, we need the answers. I mean, I'm just really going back to what Frank started out tonight with. He didn't, you know?
So, we can ask, we can ask Kelly if she can come in tomorrow.
That, that would be great. I was getting ready to suggest that.
I'll reach out, see if she'd be willing.
My, my thing is that I think what we just approved tonight is our capitol's forty-five million. My question is going into it of this two point two million supplemental and the breakdown in that. I think that's, that's the next big chunk of this is that how much of this supplemental are we going to approve?
Well, we just approved another half million.
Well, that, that's not in supplemental, that, those are the personal dollars in, in the supplemental?
Yep.
Okay. So, it's the balance of that. Okay.
So, I'll see if we can get here tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great.
Look at where we are tonight.
Okay.
This moves us to where we would go, right, to CIP.
Sure.
And we can work our way through that.
Yeah, yeah.
Then we're talking about trying to push through tomorrow night the education budget and all the cleanup items.
Okay, okay.
And then we'll wrap it up with an overview from, uh...
You know, would it, would it help, would it help you, since we got a little bit of time, when you mean cleanup, can, can you, do you want to do a little bit of cleanup now?
I don't know that we're prepared to do that.
Okay, all right, no problem.
We're prepared, we're prepared to do the, the school budget.
Okay.
Personnel and then the CIP. So, we're ready to do that. We'll do, we'll try to come in here tomorrow night, we'll get all the cleanup items. We might have to go a little bit late tomorrow night.
That's fine.
We have to ask to come in tomorrow night.
Well, I, I know that's hard on you guys and I, and I, and I appreciate it, but it's really important that the five of us are fairly clear. We're, we're not, all five of us obviously aren't going to agree, but we need to be clear.
Understood.
You know?
Understood.
Is, is that okay, Laura? And you're going to be here tomorrow night, right, Laura?
No, I'll be on Zoom again.
Okay, but you'll be here at the meeting?
By Zoom.
Yeah, by Zoom, okay. Is that, is that fair enough with the vice president?
If we, if we have to do it that way.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I think, I think it puts some pressure on staff here.
It's okay.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and walk through CIP now. Joy gave you the CIP documents while we were shaving.
Yes, yes.
And you're good, you have it?
I have it packed.
Where would you like to start on? This page one?
Well, I think the summary I thought. The first page is the summary. So, we can probably, we should start at page two.
Page two. That's where we're starting. Page two, correct?
Yeah.
Always starting off with that recycling.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, this is, this is actually, this recycling actually is about moving the one, the recycling station from St. Michael's Ball Field up to the Royal Hope once we get the home station upgraded.
So, so, is that, is that, so that, the recycling's going to be right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, that's in what it's active, it's, it's an activity issue on.
Okay.
But we'll group it back.
Okay.
The next is four point one million dollars. It's a, it's a dormant acquisition.
Okay.
And the, are they...
Is that our sheriff's department?
No, no change, no.
So, this is active, so it's active. When I say active, that means there's been activity on it in three years.
Okay.
It allows us to continue. If it goes dormant for more than three years, it goes away.
I see.
So, this is active and this is money that's available for council to purchase land.
Mm-hmm.
So, it could be part of our strategy in purchasing, uh...
The sheriff's department?
Right.
Okay, all right.
And, and maybe even some, you could address the, uh, if council decides to purchase a spoil site for future dredging of, of that.
What about the North County EMS station? Is that in here?
It could, it could also go toward buying property for that facility as well.
Okay.
But that's, that's a catch-all for that.
Got it.
And it's in good stead. Uh, there's no direct funding right during this year, but it is available.
No, there's no direct funding.
We haven't specified this year, but it is available.
Correct.
I'm glad you said something about spoiled because in Tillman, I think that property is for sale, isn't it? At Jones', what's it called?
So, so, we, I always want to speak about specific properties.
Yeah.
But, uh, there are, there are several.
Okay, okay, but they're, they're out there.
They're out there.
Okay, good. Let's do that. That's fine.
We believe we're going to put out an RFP to see who might be interested.
Okay, all right, good. Okay.
Next up is the parking lots. Um, and, uh, I believe we have already completed the asphalt underlay, but we need to work on the access road. Is that correct?
There's fifty thousand left in that one sixteen that could be used to pay, uh, the access to Bay Street on the John Newell Parkway. We have to work out the nuances with that, but there is one that we're trying to address.
And we've got an hour or two, that has sidewalks and...
Yeah, this is, uh, this is next to the library, uh, West Street in Dover, right? Yeah. And so, this, uh, Brian Moore is working with the town of Easton with respect to, you know, to detail on how to upgrade that.
Good.
These are all prior authorization, so why are we going to do them yet?
Well, we don't have to. If you don't want to, we can jump to just that if I, if you like. Is that what you like?
Are any of them wired?
I'm sorry?
Not saying any of them wired until we give you this project, sorry.
Correct.
Correct.
So, you want to just jump to the things that we're going to be doing here then?
Okay, so the, I guess the next one that we want to talk about then is public safety facility. And so...
Yeah. Okay, so we've got eight four one, four one, public safety facility. This is a sheriff's office. We had originally talked about a public safety complex.
Mm-hmm.
Five point one million dollars we've authorized in the new legislation last year.
Mm-hmm.
We're putting in here, I'm going to have to...
Well, we're putting in here six point nine million dollars for work this year twenty-three and expecting to be one of our purposes.
Okay, so this is, this is a, this is going to pave the way for us to have a conversation with you about securing a shift.
Is there any way to bake any of that going into the future? I presume that we don't have impact fees going toward this project yet?
No, yeah.
Is, is there a way of, does that require a new study with Tischler to get that baked into impact fees?
Uh, so, no, we can use a plant, Tischler study to be able to use funds against this.
Okay.
But we just, we have to be careful with the impact fees. Um, we only, the balance is available, um, the total balance that we looked at the other night is seven hundred thousand. The lion's share of that balance is related to, is, uh, is, uh, schools.
Okay. So, what, what I'm asking about is, is not what is already collected on impact fees, but, but what we, what we would ask, what would we, would, what we would collect in the future. Since we are expanding the sheriff's department, we're adding more deputies. This is the impact of a larger county population, a growing county, uh, driven by development. And so, it, it seems appropriate that impact fees should help offset some portion of that cost, which I presume would be debt service in the future.
We'll be back to council on, on DSR.
Okay.
And then we're not, we're going to skip to the next page, but not, we can't add prior organization. The next, the next up would be, uh, the library expansion. And so, the library expansion amounts have changed. Um, the explanations for this, for what Nina is asking for starts on page forty point three in the book.
We've got to spend a substantial change.
Yes, it's, you guys can just look at that additional value.
What page did you say we're looking at?
Forty point three.
Forty point three.
Do they not report income?
Uh, they've got a very small income line. And since they operate, they operate not as a department of, of, uh, the county, but rather as a, a nonprofit with, um, with county appropriations. So, that income is, is only reflected on the nonprofit statements, not on the county's statements.
I guess it's sort of like the senior center being with the state.
Yes, yes, very much. And, and, and something like fifty percent of their funding is state funding.
So, the library is asking for a total of four million, eighty thousand dollars, worth five thousand dollars in design funds at this year twenty-three. And at this year twenty-four, um, they want to spend the, the rest to, to lay the city across the design construction and give me some furniture fixtures and other things.
Yeah, this is, we, we wrote the letter of support on this last year. Um, the, uh, this first year is basically the ramp up.
Right.
Right. Do they have space on the lot still? Like, they can...
Barely, barely. It is designed to maximize the footprint of that lot.
I, I do have concerns with that. Like, same thing with the ARC, they're building in Wetlands or...
Well, in, in this case, they're, they're right in the walkable center of downtown St. Michael's and, and, you know, and this is going to serve them for a long, long time.
They have, they have some void, they have some voided space on the property. Um, Frank, if you walk it, but they're going to be bringing walls out to, to take up that voided space, um, bring out the, um, the community building run, we call the meeting run, bring that wall out. Um, the water fountain, not the water fountain, but the water feature in the front may have to be moved, um, because that wall will come out as well. So, it's going to certainly reduce their, um, open space on the lot, so.
So, let me ask you something. So, so, thi- this year they're asking for forty-five million?
No.
Forty-five thousand?
Correct.
Sorry, sorry.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
So, and, and then for, for design, for design?
I think that's right, yes.
Okay, so, so, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. What I think we should create is to give them a budget of two million instead of four million or a million, whatever. I think we need to be very careful that that budget is not more than we can afford.
More than the sheriff's department?
Yeah. So, I'm just thinking out loud. I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud. I don't mind doing the study, but in design, but we, we can't design something we can't afford. So...
I, I, I understand. I, you know, they've, they've done a study of what, they've done a need study, they've done a preliminary...
Right.
...design with the architect saying, here's, here's what would, would fill those needs.
Yeah.
It's a relatively modest project. All of this is managed one-to-one by state funding.
Right.
We're leveraging, we're leveraging other funding to make this happen.
At seventy-seven hundred and sixteen square feet, the building is deemed too small to serve the community's present and future needs. It is recommended that the library be increased in size by about half to address space deficiencies and provision needs. Was the St. Michael's Senior Center and YMCA built when that study was done?
Was it?
The...
She wasn't upset. She, she had it.
I think the, I think the senior center was still in construction at that point.
Probably on, on construction.
But there, there's a difference here. This, this is within the walkable area, of course.
I would consider the elementary school senior center, I mean, that's...
It is, it is too.
That's walkable.
It is too.
You've got a walkable trail and...
I don't think she addressed how much of this, what percentage is grant money in the four million that should be there.
There is a library within St. Michael's.
One point four, one point four, one point four from the Maryland Library capital program, one point four million.
So, why?
School, school libraries are not public libraries, as you know very well.
Yes, they are, and that's, you know, and again, Easton's fifteen minutes right. It's fifteen minutes. We have to drive to market about in the city or whatever.
This is a difficult decision for me because I really enjoy the libraries and I think that it's very important for everyone to have a place to congregate. But I'm not going to cut my nose off to spite my face and not say that we, we can't afford a sheriff's department and a health department, but just plow through and already have a plan and study to increase the size of a library by four million dollars, which would go a long way towards public safety, all, a lot of other needs. If there's, and Talbot County has to make a decision. Are we going to continue expanding the size of all buildings, all parks, all lands, or are we going to conserve those and maximize the use of them to save millions of dollars for the projects that we have? Like, because this four million dollar project is going to also come up with, what, a roof in ten years of another million dollars. So, are we, and I love the libraries, but I love my Kendall too and I...
We're stuck in this till you're twenty-five. We weren't completely married to it. We wanted them to do the study and recognize that they need to match the funds, but it is low man on the top of the world. We've got to build a public safety center. We've got to build sheriff's department and we've got to build a health department. And I don't know that in two years we have the money to do all that and, you know, the additional expense that, that school budget operating budget is going to cost us every year plus, you know, supplemental and, and capital, you know, requests from roots and things like that have to be done. We don't have the money for all of it. And I know Pete that you just love to say they, they itemize that they, that it's needed and all that. Yeah, there's a lot of these that are needed, but we don't, unless we're just going to draw our tax cap, we can prove, max out our credit and tax, go ahead and do it. Max out the income tax is the only way we can do it because we can't afford it.
Well, we, we did, but let me remind you that we took a look at the indebtedness for this when we did the, uh, when we did the debt service, uh, study earlier this, this year. This is, this is pretty modest. This is pretty modest compared to, uh, to all the other capital projects that we've, that we've had.
In terms of debt service is one of our line items, right? All our departments and schools, we have all of our departments, debt service is one of our line items.
And let me, let me just...
Hey, Laura, let, let, let Pete in, um, finish this, um, sentence, please.
Good. It just, my, I, I was basically finished with my point, which is, which is we, we looked at this, we looked at this in, in the, the debt, uh, study that, that Joy projected over the next, into the twenty forties. Um, this, and of course, it, it goes down over time. Uh, we've, we've got, uh, we've got, we're, we're retiring some debt over the next few years. We're taking on some of these other projects and it looks like we're within the range of affordability.
I've got Corey with the four questions. Will you give the forty-five thousand?
And that, and that, like, and that's what I was going to get to the point. All she's asking for right now from us is forty-five thousand dollars to do the design.
Right.
Whoever here in, in a year from now, God bless them, they got to decide on how to spend the money. Now, what you have to remember is that this, this library serves the entire Bay Hundred area. So, all the way down to Tillman, the Burnet, Fairbanks, all those folk, it's more than a fifteen minute walk. Last time I checked...
Yeah.
...to get to Easton.
Yeah.
Last time I checked, it's more than a fifteen minute walk. So, this library serves the entire Bay Hundred area, not just people walking from St. Michael's into, or driving from St. Michael's to Easton. So, and it's not like the place is not being used. It is being used. Um, their meeting room is, is used. So, and if you walk through that building, go down and, 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 and speak with, um... Sean, thank you, Bueller. Um, speak with Sean and just ask him to take you, take you, and not just the front of the library. Go behind and look at the, look at where, where the staff has to work. Go back there and look. And look at those little cramped areas where you got to open the door, move a chair to get to get into your workspace. Go back there and look and see if that's where you want your daughter or wife to work. Go ahead.
All right, we've got forty-five thousand. Who, who's in favor of forty-five thousand?
I am.
I'm good, I'm good.
I certainly am.
Let's talk about, I'm good.
Trey.
I'm good, I'm good. I just think that at some point, we're probably going to need a library in Tillman and we're going to need one in Trap.
We need playgrounds though.
We're going, we're going to get one of those moving ones, the, the mobile?
The book, yes, a bookmobile.
There you go.
Laura?
We can turn our RV into one.
We, we used that before here. You remember when we moved the, the building?
It might, it might be on with some. I can drive it.
Just because the tire is dead, doesn't mean we should keep our debt service at the same level. So, let's say the debt service is ten million and by not doing the project, it could be eight million, which is two million dollars potentially to put towards something else in our county operating budget, whether that's public safety or building the, you know, the sanitation or food station or whatever the heck it is. Just because ten million is going down to eight, doesn't mean we should raise back to ten.
Though, though I will remind you that with our current level of indebtedness, we've managed to maintain our triple A bond rating.
Of course I share about our bond rating, but just saying, if we have other things in the operating budget, it's going to be two dollars.
But you guys are here.
It's not related to the...
Okay.
And I...
Maybe we need to look at trying to keep our debt service down as much as possible.
You got the three votes?
We got, we got.
She ran again.
Cory's right. Next year, this town will figure it out.
Okay, so that a guess from forty-five?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, four. Okay, um, the next slide.
EMS stations. And we are asking for a total of two point two million dollars for the EMS stations. Um, one point two, it already been authorized. And we, a million dollars is a request, um, to use ARPA funds to be able to supplement. The two point two million is an estimate based on square footage.
Mm-hmm.
I would, I would much rather we borrow than use ARPA funds if we had to.
Hmm?
It, it is one of the recommendations coming to us from the ARPA committee to designate this. So, we don't have to do it, but...
Yeah, and there's a lot of, the Chesapeake Center is never going to get a chance to, to fundraise and put a sewer lined in and I, 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 right. But, and, and I imagine there's going to be a lot of things like that that are popping up that we're finding out of, of serious needs in the community, whereas a county could, if the county's going to, if the county's going to build a nine-one-one center, a sheriff's department and a health department, I, I feel like long-term borrowing for those three would be a better and, and utilizing that ARPA funds.
So, Joy, just for council, so in order to do long-term borrowing of this council, what, what is our timeframe? What are we going to do?
And so, uh, if, if we have to, if it requires capital enabling legislation...
So, it'd be approved in that by twenty-three by then?
Right.
And then we come in with capital enabling in July?
In July, which would not be final until September.
We can act on it September and then I think they have to do a process.
And then, I'm sorry.
We just kind of walked through this. We'd like to just...
We just walked through. And so, we've been, our financial advisor has advised that it, um, from the point that we have the active capital enabling legislation, it takes about three months to get to closing.
So, we can get the programs one, but we're bumping, we're bumping up against this council sunsetting. So, um...
The only other thing I'd say about the, the north end EMS station, I just feel like it's worthless pulling there if we can't call anybody to go and show up to it. If there's no cell phone or service.
So, as part of this project is putting up a three hundred foot tower?
And that's...
To, to...
So, and this, this property wouldn't be done until...
So, if, if we can move, we're trying to do, we're doing sewer testing right now if this property grows from Chapel Elementary School. Um, and if, you know, we can come up the solution for the sewer, uh, which we're working on right now previously, uh, that would be the location of the building and the tower would be put right behind it and that would be built with the building. And then we would, and we solve the paging problem for firefighters, uh, as well as, um, we could then try to attract...
Cell towers.
Sawdust. I will tell you right now that I've been on the front with Verizon. So, we, so Cordova Fire Department has a contract owned by American Tower to put a tower at Cordova Fire Department. And the vendor can't hit Verizon to come, to site there because the traffic isn't enough to justify that. I think that once we get our tower up or we work on the Cordova thing, we have to figure out a way to lure Verizon or AT&T to that area. Very well, they don't have the count, the number to put the investment in there.
We need the library's calculator. How many people used that library last year? Remember she told us that?
Yeah.
Yeah, there were.
Yeah.
Wasn't, wasn't there two commas?
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a, it's a big number. I don't remember what it is.
So, if we use whatever calculator the library uses for visits and apply that to Cordova Central, to how many people visit the school, fire department?
Yeah, I mean, I, I know that when we talk to Verizon, they have a methodology they use. They watch traffic. They watch their traffic. They can see where they are. They can see where the engagements are. And they make their business decisions based on volumes.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I don't know.
I'm, I'm good, I'm sorry. I'm, we're, we're way off. I'm fine. We'll be here forever.
But your point, I think that we may have an opportunity to discuss grant opportunities to help lure them in to the life service.
You, you good, Frank?
Yep.
Okay, let's move on.
So, I would be in favor of, of keeping that million in there.
Okay, all right. Health department. And we have a total of, about a twelve million. And...
So, what was the number? Well, we met with them a week or two ago.
Fifteen.
Twelve, was it closer than nine?
It was twelve and we wanted to get to ten.
And we're...
But, you know, we're, it might've been fifteen and we're halfway there.
I think it was fifteen at least.
Yeah, okay.
Fifteen to eighteen.
Fifteen.
Okay, okay.
On a buy or a leave?
To buy.
On the buy.
We, we want to, we want to buy.
We want to buy.
What I was thinking was if we buy it and put like two million down, ask for a year of free rent while they build it out, and then that will give us a year to get the bond issue, give, give us time to, to do our due diligence on that side of it for free. We would own it. They've got the down payment, it's secured. I, I would think we could move pretty quick on that, that, in that form. And I think that would be...
Well, maybe if it's okay with you, are we all in agreement with the twelve?
Placeholder amount, yes.
Placeholder amount, then let, let staff create, uh, the, the payment.
Yes.
You okay?
Yeah, I thought the number was going to be a little less than that, but obviously we cannot deal with that.
Yeah.
Well, we can, we can, we can, we can always spend less.
And they've already come down. They were at eight, they were at eighteen the first time they came to us.
Exactly.
We're looking at repurposing another function that was originally put in there.
Right. Okay, good.
Let me ask you something. Counties are responsible for the physical space of the
health department, but all moving expenses, doesn't the state pick that up?
Yeah.
You know, just...
Well, we, we did answer the question that the state furnishes it, so presumably they would do that as well.
Yeah, okay. I'm just, I was asking.
Broadband.
You want to hear?
Okay.
Are we good on broadband? Yep, I'm sure everybody's okay with that.
Yeah, we are.
We've, we've, we've already voted the funding for that, but this is just, uh, just voting to put it in the capital budget.
That's the ARPA money, right?
Yeah, it's the ARPA money, yep.
Uh, one point five ARPA money?
You got it. And sheet number four now. Yep, we're on, no, we're on, we're on four. Land acquisitions and...
Oh, yeah, one more. This is a very slight, uh, this is a site for Dredwood Hero and I think we just, we just discussed that...
Placeholder, placeholder. Okay, that sounds good.
I support it.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Wait a minute, didn't you, could you just skip, um...
Election board? And I want, yeah, what if...
And I want, yeah, what about those two?
Sorry about that. We did, skip ahead, thank you, Laura. Um, election board, uh, we have a hundred million dollars of funding.
Laura.
Perhaps a secure location for that.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't that be, um, can, can we take that out and put that into the sheriff's department?
I wouldn't mind leaving it there for now.
Okay, that's fine, but I think that's what we talked about.
Public safety department. They were supposed to go over to it in the health department.
Presumably, even if, if...
Health department, not, not sheriff department.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry.
But it's supposed to be a line item, has to pay for that.
Yeah, and that line item's in there, I thought, yeah, I'm sorry.
Just possibly be...
Support.
Yeah, possibly the ARPA fund, maybe possibly.
Where did that, that particular figure come from? Where did you come up with?
Uh, this, this was...
You guys know you... Uh, so, it was you from the...
So, we pushed this forward, so Angela put the number in last year when she did the budget.
It's probably just a home number, if you're not sure.
It's a plug number.
Probably is.
Can you give a backup for where the, where the number is?
We can take a look at that.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, next project is a K F replacement project for...
Three-year project would be after place security dispatch system, the first year is to design, uh, all the, and then you just don't know how to pull it off in the next two to do it.
And, and I'm assuming the ARPA money can't help that?
Uh, well, I don't know.
I'm looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five, which I won't be here for, that's the date number's one seven, six hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah, let's keep it.
Support.
Yeah. Okay.
So, then we are on page four. And that, this, uh, item on page four is the land acquisition to, to the area.
Okay, that's good. Support, support it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eighty-four ninety-nine, is that ever gonna get done?
Eighty, eighty-four?
Is it ever, is it ever gonna get done?
As long as I'm here.
Every year? We've been talking about it for the last fifteen years.
Yes, sir, I, I, I remember pulling minutes from two thousand and...
Mr. Foster, thanks.
Yeah, no, we, we were told that it was, it was a severely, uh, uh, corroded pilings and that we didn't do anything within...
You want me to go put new boards on it?
No, 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 no.
Look at the next item, look what we're going to, eighty-four thirty, look at that.
Nice.
Eighty-four thirty?
Nice.
Bridges.
Maintenance.
And that, that's an ongoing problem there. And they want me to do that bridge.
Which one, Newcombe or...
I'm talking about the NAPS.
Yeah, the, the, the next one is a collective, uh, I think he said we have six or seven, seven bridges that had been inspected and there are requirements for work to be done on that, and this is a number of details.
And, and the, the dredging there is gonna, almost have to be a constant, a constant.
We're on that.
I'm talking, I'm talking about the, about the NAPS narrow.
Oh, no, we...
I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, this...
That's the part.
And we're on the top of page five.
Right.
Eighty-four thirty, bridges.
Oh, I went on the wrong bridge there.
That's okay.
General bridge, oh.
So, you're all good with that?
We can spend that money six times over.
Laura?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm just curious.
We got three. Okay, eighty-four.
Yes.
And we're asking for a hundred million dollars, and this is what you're planning to make, uh, efforts to handle roads.
So, this, yeah. So, this is, uh, this allows us to cover, you know, uh... This allows us to cover, uh, roads plan for, for, you know, improving roads throughout the county.
These, these are more minor things than Airport Road, than Goldsboro Neck Road.
Right. These are more general. And frankly, they, they do also cover, give us cover for situat, major, major situations that develop that we aren't anticipating.
Culverts or...
Yes, exactly.
Black Dog Alley looks fantastic. I remember that discussion of safety and concern and how to have trucks on it or not, and, and it could not be better.
What is eight, what is, um, eighty-four fifty-eight and eighty-four ninety-nine?
Well, eighty-four fifty-eight is your favorite Tunisian road.
I know, and I, I saw it on here again on the eighty-four ninety-nine.
That's the, that's the little landing that's next to the bridge.
The, the, the diving pier and all that? I thought we were gonna keep that, right?
Yes.
Yes.
This probably doesn't...
And so Ray has great hope that this year he will be able to have movement on this project. And he, with federal funds. So, he's trying to acquire right away on one side of the bridge, he needs to have another community.
We've been following what that guy for the last five years. There's only one home.
Well, it looks like he's finally gotten to that point, that's great.
He's a very important homeowner.
This is an easy one to say yes to.
We have yeses.
We do have yeses.
Yeah, they go to, go to far than say no. No, it's okay, we changed our mind, ten years later, we changed our mind.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, why is, okay, so I'll just jump again. So, why is Goldsboro Neck Road two and a half last year at two million, this year another one and a half in the upcoming years? And all local funds, we can't get any more for a year?
No, we, 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 we have put in for money and, um, so we had, so, so this is a complex issue and you're gonna see down here, every year we have this conversation, because down lower you see Airport Road. And we always say, well, why don't we just combine the two? And there's a reason why we don't. But, so these are segmented, this is segmented, so we, we did the one piece from the entrance to Mistletoe to Vila, and we had roads do that piece. Right now, we're trying to get easements from Mistletoe over to Airport Road, which is another segment. We have grant funding to do from the end, from Vila Road to Glebe Road, but not the culvert. And we have grant money to do that, and we're poised to be able to put in requests for other funding to do the, the other segments I mentioned of Goldsboro. We have to do a massive upgrade to the culvert.
Yes.
And we have to find money for that.
Yeah.
Look, I mean, we're gonna try to find money.
Yeah, it needs to be...
Wouldn't Warren walk in here? Kind of like Warren Edwards walked in here, right on the top of his head.
I was noticing, he, he had all this, I was ready for him to give me the, the linear feet price.
Yes, yes.
Two point five linear miles of...
Well, I support the Goldsboro Neck improvements, we're, we're building up those parks out there, we're, they're gonna get a lot of traffic in the years to come.
And we're looking for grant, and we're actually gonna look for EDC, potentially EDC money because it's creating, you know, we have job creation in Mistletoe.
Well, once those big trucks start running through the park, you're gonna need their roads, they're gonna travel through them.
This is what, this is how Ray wanted to plug this in here, um, but we will be looking for grant opportunities.
Okay.
And that's, that's the goal for a piece, and we're talking a minute about the airport piece. Right now, we gotta get our easements. We'll work on that.
So, next is the, uh, project of culvert replacement.
Just calling why?
We got, we got four, we got three hundred and eighty-six culverts we have to fix, and we're only thirty-six in them.
That's not bad.
This is a multi-year upgraded culvert.
I am curious why in so much less this year, we had two, two million last year, it's two hundred thousand this year, now we have a million basically in the next three years.
So, not gonna be able to give us much, I, I suspect we're not, did you, did he speak to that?
Yeah, he did.
We initially did have a million in there and they recommended we bump it down to two hundred thousand.
So, this is about what he thinks he can get done next year.
I got you.
Please mark.
So, what, what this is also doing though is it's, it's increasing the authorization from two point one million up to five point one and, and looking at some of those out years.
Yeah, because I mean, you know, we're, I think you, I'm trying, we're, we're being realistic on what you're...
Material costs.
Pushing things and plus one and a half, we got the headwinds of supply and increasing costs.
Asphalt to the roads.
Yeah, yeah, you can factor in that material cost is gonna be going up and up.
All right, support it.
Yep.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay. Next is water improvement, water quality improvement project. And we're asking for...
Yeah.
Fifty thousand dollars.
This is, this is stormwater systems, ditch improvements.
Probably.
Yes.
Three, three states ditches and bags, uh, yeah.
Yep. I agree.
Walinsky, before he retired, came up with, uh, designs for, for these ditch...
You ever see his manual?
I still have not seen that manual, no.
I, if I have a copy of it at home, I'll give it to you.
I would love to see that.
I'll, I'll pull it. He, he actually came up with the manual.
Yes.
That's what he drew up.
Yes, I've heard about it, but I...
Three hours to drive to Dorchester County.
He weighed, he weighed down there, he invited me to come down for lunch, I said, no, I'm not.
All right.
He has mosquitoes inside the size of a B-50 tank.
Support.
Let me write myself a note and give you that manual.
Yes. Thank you, Corey.
Bill's manual too.
Support.
Yes, I support it.
Yep.
Laura?
Airport.
Okay, measure project, uh, we're working on getting easements right now, um, between Mr. Gannon, the airport, um, Mr. Wagner, and then the town of Houston.
And this looks like this is the final year of this improvement project if this is authorized.
The big challenge is we've been waiting to tie in six sixty-two and Route fifty, with that same chain. We've put them, we've made them aware of it and we're trying to push forward on this. We're gonna get a lot more traffic with Mr. Wagner's warehouses out there.
All right, support.
Support.
Yeah.
I'll support it. Great.
So, we need the public...
Down to the middle, really?
Public what?
Public school.
School of each sex.
Okay.
And the priorities, the, the one priority is the first project, um, St. Michael's High School recital. We asked for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to service that.
Remember, we did this year, Houston High School.
Right.
And then there was a little problem with the...
We, 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 we put this off because we need, we needed to move the funding from this project in the current year over to, to Houston High School in order to get Houston High School done.
And we delayed this while waiting for the senior center and the...
We did.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, three, four, okay, and five.
So, do you want, yeah, um, before you press them, can we talk about these high school roof replacements? They don't have a priority number on that.
So, that's...
It's already authorized.
Yeah, it's authorized, so...
You authorized it. You already authorized that.
Okay, so we already talked about that. So, then the rest of them are not in priority, uh, order, and it looks like they're...
We, we, we do have priorities assigned to them that we'll share with you.
Well, they, they actually, I think the priorities numbers in the first column.
Yep.
So, what I'm saying is, that's the one point eight million dollar expensive one, is there separate priorities?
Yes.
So, I'm hoping we can put that amount off the tab.
Okay.
Remind me.
So, let's talk about the one point eight is the turf.
Yes.
They wanna do, they wanna consider in the future, this is why they threw it out there.
That's just so offensive. At, at a time of need and we're trying to figure out how to get the staff to, they want one point eight million. They want two, what do they want for contingency? Two, four, and then one eight for turf.
So, yeah, so they, they, this is their number seven.
It was clearly the bottom priority, I think this is, this is an appropriate deferment, in my opinion.
Appropriate cancellation.
The next, I should have put these... And, uh, the next one up is a, a White Marsh outdoor classroom playground. That's a number five priority.
Do you wanna go priority seven, priority seven, six, five, four, three?
Okay, all right, fine. All right, number six is the creation of an access road for, uh, single direction traffic for buses. That's eighty thousand dollars. Priority six.
Why don't we do decent priority for, and figure out how much money you wanna allocate and see how many priorities we can get through?
So, we've done the number one.
Okay, so you want me to, all right, we'll go the river. All right, so number two is the pole building. And they're looking for controls, temperature control storage, and that's sixty-five thousand dollars.
So, again, the entire county has a need for storage.
Automatic alarm.
Yeah, sure, for, for pleasant, good pleasant environment.
If they have space for storage, who else could benefit out there? Could we also do... Could we store the, the boating machines out there?
Uh, that's got, that's got security requirements.
Well, they need a security fence.
It's number four. That's, that's Tillman for the, keep the kids on the playground.
I'm just kidding.
Again, I just, I would wanna maximize any use of any storage unit, storage space possible, and this is, this is isolated to just their need and they didn't tell anybody else in the county, we have a storage need, who else does? And let's come up with a plan on it, this is...
Well, I mean, in all fairness, I mean, they're, they're, I mean, obviously, we should, we, we should look at opportunities to partner on it. And we should always look for those, and, and that, that's a good, and you could certainly ask about this, but they are a pretty significant operation.
And if, if I remember correctly too, not that I had it that way, but they, they have asked for storage.
They've, they've, we've deferred them a couple of years on this.
We've done this a couple of times.
Even when it was their, their number two priority. I, I think we should support it this time around, and it's a modest amount.
So, this, this is our supplemental dollars?
So, this is, this is, this is for the system, this is for the system as a whole, they're happening, they're happening to locate this, uh, for, out, out at the, uh, Mount Pleasant.
So, this is over and above supplemental?
This is over and above supplemental, so over, over and above the two point four, two point two.
Okay.
I'm unfortunately gonna have to be a no on everything but the playground and fence at White Marsh.
Okay, wait a minute, sir, are you, are you for the pole building?
No.
Are you for the...
I'm, I'm in favor.
Are you, Chuck?
I, I am in favor of the pole barn.
Corey, are you in favor of the port pole building? Laura, are you in favor of the pole building?
What did Corey said?
Not, no, he's contemplating.
Contemplating.
I wanna have a comment play first.
Chuck, you said yes?
I said yes.
Yes.
Okay, we got three, did you go to yes?
Yes.
Okay, friend with the yes, we got three.
I think that's a big need, so, let, let, yeah, keep going.
So, where we're going next? Anything bus line?
Yeah, that would be number three.
Nope.
Bus line.
No.
No.
Okay, we have three no's.
Okay.
All right. The school security fence.
Uh, school?
Yes, and the playground to go with it.
Yes.
There's no sense putting the playground up without the fence.
Yes.
Okay, two yeses, three yeses. We have three yeses for both the white, the classroom, or also the playground and the security fence. Okay? And the creation of the access road for single-way traffic for buses?
No.
No.
No?
That should go together with the paving.
That's two no's. Okay, that's three no's. Okay, so that's out. Okay. And the, okay, you're done, right?
We're done. Seven.
I would like to kick off the chapel district roof. I, I don't think that that should be a consideration considering it's up for renovation or reconstruction.
So, the roof, roof replacement is still, what, what, I thought that was all fully authorized? It's not fully authorized?
And it was in the fiscal year twenty-two.
Yeah, it's hay, I first saw it.
Oh.
It could finish in the...
And we need to move, we, so we need the authorization to move that into the next fiscal year?
Correct.
All right, well, support that, you can't have half of a roof.
I know, we already did that, I was talking about this, the five twenty-five for the chapel.
Oh, coming up, yes.
I don't, I wouldn't wanna confuse...
Got it.
People are gonna say, so somebody may think of replacing a roof or approving that when they're getting ready, they're doing this study.
Right.
How much is that over, over supplemental that you just approved? How much is that over, over supplemental that you just approved? That's three hundred and fifty thousand, another forty-six thousand, another nineteen thousand, and another sixty-five thousand, over, over and above the supplemental?
Including the, you have to, including the, finishing the roof for the Eastern High School, that's one point six.
Which is mostly finishing the roof job.
Right.
Right.
So five hundred thousand plus.
Right.
So if, so if we finish the school.
Uh, we have the ability to push things out, uh, so even though we're not deciding on Chapel, because of the study, should we be pushing that out to at least twenty-five?
The chapel roof is on twenty-five, I'm saying just get rid of it.
Well.
It was on twenty-four right now.
It's not this budget.
Why don't we let, leave, let the next council decide that?
You know, but it's going to, we do this a lot, where we decide where do we want to kind of put this in, which fiscal years we want to, even if it's the next council, that's correct. But if, if we don't think that it's going to be something, it is going to be next year because of the study that Frank pointed out, um, I mean, Angela did that all the time, deciding which year, the next couple of years, we want to kind of pitch hole it in.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even consider it. I don't know, you might just, you know, get ready.
It's not pushing out, we're not doing it, we're doing a remodel.
Yeah.
We're, we're, you know, so it's not, it's not a roof, it's more of a, we're going to get.
That's interior.
Right.
I mean, when I took these the first year, I, I, I took these and added them all up and started paying attention to future years and trying to come up with planning in previous years. Why even confuse anybody with something?
Right, right, you, you don't, that, that.
So it's a placeholder for this project. If you pull it, if you pull, if you defund it, pull it out of there, and it falls off, you might want to leave it on here.
Can we defer to the renovation?
Yeah, would they do it?
That's, that's the point.
Would there be any reason to replace the roof?
Yeah, so that you don't wreck the renovation.
If we, if we don't, if we don't, if we don't all agree, if the next council doesn't agree with refurbishing.
So what will happen is this project will, will be moved to, and we'll rename that project.
Right.
So the, just maybe you bring it now, put it under slash, refurbishment slash renovation.
Okay, we can do that, we can add renovation.
That's good, that's good.
Do that.
All right.
And so just as we close out on the school thing, I did talk to Kelly Griffin on the phone, she'll be here tomorrow.
Okay, um, does, does council, does council want Sarah here?
Uh, well, it's up to Kelly to answer that, I, I didn't, she's over.
Okay, I just didn't want, you know, there's a lot of questions, I, I didn't want to, for her to feel uncomfortable she couldn't ask her without Sarah, so.
I planned to contact her beforehand to let her know what I want to ask.
Where she gets here, I want to just do this on the fly, the verbiage, I want to see what we asked for on paper.
Okay.
I, I don't.
Is the question that we have.
I don't know if I can get, we've already asked for that information.
Okay.
And we've, we haven't received it, and she's going to appear here tomorrow.
Okay, fair enough.
That's really all.
Fair enough, fair enough.
We've stressed that we want the information.
Yep.
And, uh, she can, you know, she can answer the questions.
That's right.
And she may bring Sarah or not on much.
Okay, I'll just, yeah, okay, that's fine.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's, and tomorrow's starting at three.
Right, the advanced page is.
Seven, number seven?
These are standard, this is.
Okay, so, all right, so the boss man never, there, there we go, that thing's been going on a while.
Well, actually, first, first one, first one is, is Tillman, Region Five. Putting that in fiscal twenty-four.
No, we don't talk about it anymore.
No.
Well, that's, it, it's increasing the, it's increasing the prior authorization of three and a half by another two and a half for that project.
It's not, it's turning in orange.
Well, and that is, you know, okay, that's going to be, we're putting it for Frank, I'm going to do that, for your grant.
So we, we need to have it in, in this budget so that we can get the grant funding for it.
Yes, you got it.
Right, right. I'll, I'll support that, I mean, upgrading Tillman is important.
We did move it from twenty-five to forty.
So we're pushing it out.
Okay.
All right, support?
Yeah, absolutely.
Cory?
Yeah.
And Laura?
Wait a minute. You still can't do this.
And next is Region Two Watershed replacement plan. And, uh, we did, we did move some, some funding around. The total, uh, project now between the two categories is twenty-nine million dollars.
Twenty-nine or twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three plus.
Plus the five and a half above.
Well, I'm, I'm adding.
I, I got you, I'm sorry, okay, got you. Okay.
We are, we're expecting to borrow nine million dollars in fiscal year twenty-three.
Okay.
And the rest will be grants funded, funded, one point five million.
So I just, I just talked to Ray, uh, or got an email from Ray about this the other day. This is, uh, getting, I think, the trunk line down there. Some of the engineering work and getting, getting the basic infrastructure in place. Uh, it's not going to hook anybody up, I think, this year, but it's, it's going to, it's, it's getting us an important step forward in that, in that project. So I'll, I'll, I'll support the addition. And Ray's, Ray's looking for more grant funding to make this affordable for the residents.
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
Okay.
Next is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, uh, for the Region Five or Neck Thomax or extension.
Yep.
Yes.
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 Okay, Laura?
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, last is Martinham Emergency Generator, three forty.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know, we know that that has to happen.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, uh, everyone is good? Laura, you good? Okay.